Let's call our meeting.
Joe Becker here.
Peter Busenbach here.
Scott Gergen.
Here.
Lisa Dean.
Here.
Dave Hemble.
Here.
Ross Roloff here.
Kelsey Weitz.
Here.
And Superintendent Collins.
Here.
All right, thank you, Russ. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the June 20th, 2018 regular board meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion in a second to approve the bills payable?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion and a second to approve the charitable donations for the fourth quarter or fiscal year?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion?
Just as I think.
Thank you as always.
As always, yep, it's just a never-ending generosity. It's terrific. Um, could I get a motion in a second to accept the quarterly review of student activities?
I think we need to vote.
We need to vote.
We need to vote.
I'm sorry, I threw you off your groove.
Yeah. It's good, it's good.
You're on a roll.
No, I was on a roll. You don't have to be pretty smart. All right, um, all those in favor of motion of approving charitable donations? We can call it.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Could I get a motion in a second to accept the quarterly review of student activities?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. With that, we will move into the superintendent's report.
I'm gonna start out with something that's not under the superintendent's report, but it is part of what I want to share because it ties into some of the action items down below. And that's just to give you a quick overview of, um, we're members of C. So, you know, what is C? What do they do for us as a school district? And schools for equity in education. There's 58 member districts that are part of C. And one of the main characteristics that all the school districts have, and they can be from small school districts to large school districts, is that they typically come from low property wealth districts. That's the one commonality that they have. And I just put four of them up there just for you to have a feel for four of the 58. Stillwater, um, larger than us, New Prague about our size, Prairie Lake about our size. And when you think of those communities, they just, they don't have a lot of industry in their community. And that's what makes them more of a low property wealth district like us. We don't have a ton of industry in our district. Um, C will host regional meetings. I typically will attend probably two of those regional, two or three of those regional meetings throughout the year. Um, they help organize a school lobby day. I know that a couple of you have been up on the school lobby day, um, with me. Uh, at those regional meetings, they organize bringing in legislators, they organize bringing in key speakers. And then they have a veteran lobbyist that's been with them for 20 years. And, uh, basically he pushes for the fact that, um, he brings in charts to show legislators that, hey, a $1,000 operating levy in Hastings costs the taxpayers this amount of money. That same $1,000 operating levy in Bloomington costs the taxpayers this amount of money. Let's get some equity there. That's, that is one of their main, um, core missions that they've been fighting over the years. So, uh, over the, over my tenure here as superintendent, we sometimes, um, when times were really tough, we didn't pay that membership. Uh, and I'm gonna be recommending for us to be a member with this next legislative session, being a key funding year, um, to be a member of the C. Metro XU, um, some of you may have heard recently now Metro XU is thinking of joining the former Ties, which is Sourcewell. So they've been talking about becoming, um, joint powers. I find that interesting. I haven't heard a lot of, you know, enough about that yet. But just this past year, to give you a feel, this is how Metro XU, how Hastings has used Metro XU. Of course, with some of them being, uh, a number of students and participation, participation and, uh, different activities. I'm not going to go through all of them, the Metropolitan Principal Academy. Um, and you can see the miscellaneous that we've used. They also, every year they can, every other year they conduct a class size study. So if I wanted to, I could say to them, what's the average class size for third grade in Farmington, South Wash, Rosemont, Apple Valley, and Hastings? And I could bring that back to you as a board. Uh, definitely if we're not a member, then we would have to find other avenues to try and have our knowledgeable, our STEM link, our young authors, et cetera. So that's part of what we get for our membership there. Then the last one that ties into an agenda item, um, on your agenda tonight is the testing for lead in drinking water. It was passed this last legislative session that a school district must approve a plan. I'm not going to give you a, well, I guess there is, there's information about it in your packet, but I'm gonna verbally go through with you what our plan is. Uh, what they said was that, um, all taps for drinking water or cooking in a district must be tested for lead. That test has to occur once every five years. And that school districts have to get that accomplished between July 1st, 2018, and the 23rd. So we have five years in which to test all of our sites. So then the question is, well, would we test one site per year? Or would we test them all? I believe that we'd get a better bid if we just had a company come in and, and test them all. Plus then that way, I as a superintendent and you as board members know, hey, we tested the entire district. So, uh, in consultation with Denise Jorgensen, who looks at our health and safety issues, she said with this law just coming out, there's gonna be a lot of school districts going out for this testing this coming fall. The ability to get a good quality firm to come in and do your testing might be questionable. And from that then, I said, well, I, I agree, and we might not even get tested until January or February, so why, why push it? We, we have been testing our sites, not every five years. It had been a recommendation of what we, what we had been doing. So our plan, and I'm gonna be asking you to approve this plan later on, is to test the following year. All of our sites except the middle school that year. Because that site that year will be under construction. And it'll be, um, they'll be doing all the repiping. They then would be tested the following year. And then after that, five years from there then, um, then we will test all sites in 2024. So, uh, that's, that's the plan that I'm gonna be asking for you as a board to approve. I think it's good too for the public, um, who watches us is that, uh, over the years, the testing was a recommendation by the state. School districts were not required to do it. And we had been testing our sites, not in that every five-year pattern, but we had been testing them. Uh, but now it will be manned, and I think it's a good thing. I, I think it's, if, if there's a test that's being mandated by the state, I think this is a, a good test for the state to mandate. Just to give you and the public, um, a rough estimate of cost, it'll probably cost us around $6,500 to $7,000 to test all of our sites. Uh, then, once they're tested, I will come back and present that report to you as a school board and to the public. We'll put it on our website. So again, that's what I'll be looking for approval of down in our agenda.
Just one quick question on that, on, it has to do with the middle school. Would there be any benefit or would it even be feasible to do that testing before we start the construction at the middle school? And the, not that we're going to find an issue, but if there was something that needed to be addressed, that way we have it prior to construction rather than post-construction?
I think part of my thought on that was, we might not get a firm to come in and even do that until like next March. And then we're gonna start construction already in the summer, and so that's why I held off.
Okay.
Um, under the superintendent's report, locks for, uh, interior classroom doors. What we'd started to do about a year and a half ago, specifically, we started at our middle school site because Mark Zuzik, um, had a Boy Scout who did it as his project. Uh, and basically, what happened was, the Boy Scout came in, drilled a hole through here, put a little eye hook through here, 89 cents. And then a leather strap that hung there so that in case of a violent intruder, he could take that leather strap, put it around here, and now we have a double lock. The door was locked, and if the lock was penetrated, then when they opened it up, they'd have to fight through, um, another lock, so to speak. So right now, our practice at our sites is that teachers have the door handle locked. There's a magnet in the metal frame. So if there's a violent intruder, you remove the magnet, boom, door's locked. But this was gonna prevent, this was gonna put up another barrier. Um, locally, our fire marshal said that that's not acceptable under the current statute. So I just wanted to let you as a board know, I want it stated publicly, that, because we were going to continue with that process at the high school with another Boy Scout, uh, this summer. Um, so for now, we're just moving away from that, and we're just going to, I don't wanna say just. Uh, a door locked on a door like that, it would take a violent intruder some time to get through that door, uh, as well. So for now, that's the system that we're, we're going to go with. Um, wanna let you know as a board that in this last legislative session, the state of Minnesota, um, due to another tragedy really in Florida, there was a heightened awareness during the legislative session again about school safety. They talked a lot about grants, they talked a lot about appropriating money for school safety. Uh, in the end, when it shook out, they gave $25 million to the entire state of Minnesota for school safety. They said that 50% of that $25 million had to go to the metro schools, or schools of metro size. Duluth would be considered a metro school, and then the other 12 million had to go to, um, outstate. Well, and they were up to $500,000 in grants. So I just wanna let you know that, um, over the past month, I've worked with WOLD, uh, coming up with, I wanted it to be prepared when MDE, because they say it's a first come, first served. So Tim Collins wanted to be first. And, because then I'm gonna argue, hey, the deadline was this date, we got it in 10 seconds after that deadline, et cetera. Um, so, one of the things that we couldn't do as far as safety was something that we'd already been working on. So when our community, so you can't supplant something that was already approved. So our community, uh, over the years has approved a lot. They approved again more security cameras, they approved a security entrance at Tilden, um, they approved pager system at our high school, et cetera. So what I did with WOLD was design more secure entrances at the high school, both at the upper level and the lower level. Uh, rough cost estimates, so they were already designed, so when this grant came out, we could just hit send. Cost estimates were already attached. And then I had drafted a page on why we should be considered a high priority with everything that we've done over the years, and that we're continuing to be a leader in school safety in the state of Minnesota. Um, and we'll see it's, we're ready. It came out on Monday on the MDE website, and I know that we had to be one of the first ones in.
They, they didn't accept grants on Monday.
They didn't accept them? I was gone.
That was just the information. The grants are due the 29th of August.
All right, well, we're gonna be the first on the 29th of August.
12:01, alarm will go off.
I wanted to let you know as a board that those two proposals cost $675,000 in total. So that if we do get approved, we will have to come up with the other $175,000. But I figured as a board, you'd say, if we can get 500 grand for 175 grand, um, we'll do it. So anyway, I wanna let you know that we did our due diligence. Deanna was working on behind the scenes as I was gone Monday and, and Tuesday on vacation to make sure that we were ready to go. So we're really ready to go. Um, I'll use this video as testimony that we were the first ones ready. And I'll send it along with our grant, that on this date, we were ready. So we are first come, uh, first served, for, for those of you who MDE are listening.
It's like, can't be held fine.
Yeah. I'll go sit there for 500 grand. Yeah. Uh, project updates, uh, I know that the facility committee board members typically get to be in on more of this than the rest of you as board members, but for the community, um, as well, this is a great opportunity to let everyone know where we're at. Uh, right now, up at our, our high school is where we've had our most activity with our projects. The track right now has its, um, base down. We have to wait so many days, I wanna say it's three to four more weeks before we can put on what I would say is the, the final layer. The high school parking lot, which is known, which is known as the staff, or as the student parking lot, the lower parking lot, and the road that goes in what I'd say is the front of the high school. It has its first layer on it. We're waiting, um, we're doing a little bit more cement work. Right now, we're also in a situation where the, the roofing company never felt they would get as far as they're getting. Um, they're actually gonna be probably done this year. Originally, we felt it was gonna be a two-phase.
They're, they're.
And, um.
They got a ton of bodies on that job.
And.
Although they're totally.
And they're, 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 yeah, I was gonna say, at least till eight, they're there on holidays, they're there on weekends. It's like, wow. And, uh, so at the same time that the chiller, they're gonna have to bring the chiller in with cranes on the backside of the school, then do we put a lift on that or not? Because we're afraid that we're gonna do damage with fresh tower, et cetera. So some, those are some of the things. The chiller is not supposed to be coming in until about October. But, um, the second lift could go on next week at the high school. And then, of course, we wanna start getting into striping, um, before, as some of you know who have had children come through the system, um, activities start happening already the, the middle of, of August. So we're, we're at the high school parking lot. The McCullough parking lot is a little bit behind schedule. Uh, we had a mallard duck that built a nest, um, in the area where, I was like, I, I said to Jim Huberty, are you kidding me? You're making this up. And for the duck lovers, they're protected, and we had to wait until the DNR could come out, move the mallard duck, um, nest. And so that delayed it, I'm sorry. But McCullough parking lot eventually will be done before school gets started.
Are we gonna do a bronze placary?
Yeah, and, uh, let's just say there's.
Do you want to make a donation? Make way for duck wings, statue.
Let's just say there's some duck comments going around, uh, on that whole thing. So, um, that's where we are with that. Oh, I wanna go back to the high school. Um, the BAS, the automation system, that what controls, um, all the heating ventilation. We're just, there's some parts that we're waiting on before we can start, uh, going on, on that project. Um, the, the cameras, we're still moving forward with that project yet. Um, one of the things, we're not probably gonna finalize the security entrance at Tilden. But we are going to put in two doors that are gonna be able to control so that in the evenings, um, the senior center can operate. We can lock those doors and protect that wing of the building. And WOLD is still talking with Kerry Gore about, uh, the security entrance at, at that site. Unfortunately, this wasn't on the list, but we're, uh, right now in the middle of having to knock down some trees too. We've had some diseased trees at a variety of sites. And at, um, two of the sites, we have trees where the roots have gotten into the sewer system. And so, um, we hate to do that. But as you, if you hear from parents or you hear from community members, hey, why'd you knock down those trees? We had to because of, of the disease in the, in the trees. So that's a, um, core update on that. The, the middle school update, I, I had that on here. We're meeting again next Tuesday, the facility committee with WOLD and with teachers, FIAD teachers and Jim Rohr. Uh, but again, there's, there's two main points that we're really looking at on the middle school too. They shared with us that they wanted to bid it in about December or January. So they feel that there's still time. But you'll love my, uh, drawings, they're not to scale up here. But I, I pre-drew these, if you give all board members some of what the facility members, committee members have been discussing. In our middle school gymnasium, um, right now, there's bleachers here that divide these two gyms, and there's bleachers here. So when we had graduation, these bleachers were pulled down, these bleachers were pulled down. Mark Zuzik and us, we sat up here, parents sat in here, family members sat in here, and the students sat on the floor. Our FIAD teachers have wanted this, these bleachers to move here because it's tough to have a class when you really can't see what's being, going on behind the bleachers. And I don't know, middle school kids tend to do a few things when the teacher's not looking. So for safety, they wanted to move these bleachers here. Well, when you move these bleachers here, then these parents will be sitting that much further away from graduation or elasium. So our committee's been talking about, how many bleachers do we really need? Uh, with new regulations, if we want to adjust these bleachers here, they would hold 1,000. And then we have 1,350 students. So if you have a, for those of you who interviewed Steve Kovach, our new middle school principal, he likes to have about six or seven license for students a year. Part of his honor, rah rah, you're doing good. So 1,000 students would go here, 150 students would have to sit here, and staff would be intermingled in here. And then we went to have this set of bleachers, and what would we do for graduation? So that's one of the things that our committee is talking through. It's really not to save the money because we budgeted for it. It's really, do we need this set of bleachers if we only use it for graduation and a few licenses out of the year? The other thing that we've been talking about is our locker room at the middle school. We're very fortunate as a middle school because this used to be a high school. So we have the four core locker rooms, girls and, and boys. And they're on the, what I would call the upper part of the middle school. And then what a lot of us reference too is the dungeon, is you walk down, um, a long ramp. For, I think all of us have been down that ramp, a long ramp, um, there were two locker rooms there. So it got into Title IX of whether or not we could have these locker rooms just for football and for wrestling. And I made the comment, it could be used for girls softball too, it could be used for other sports as well, uh, in the spring of the year. They could have a dual purpose. Well, as we got into discussion, uh, here we found out, and the committee members are gonna find out, that it's all on the same level. Which we're excited about. Because it's weird, you walk down the ramp into the dungeon, but when you take the corner to get into the locker room, you have to go up three to four steps. So the good news on that, I believe WOLD's gonna come back to us.
It must be like this.
It's really.
I'm sure, I'm sure it actually is, but it's not pictured.
And, but, because I've walked down it a lot. So I believe the good news, what we're gonna hear on Tuesday from WOLD, is that's great. We're gonna be able to, I believe, blow a hole through here, and then put in lockers here for football. And then you're gonna be able to use that for football and wrestling. And then you're gonna be able to do the same here. I believe we'll, we'll hold on here. And I don't think that we're gonna have to spend the money for the showers right in, in here. And/or it's going to give us more room to do more privacy showers slash, slash bathrooms. So I think when we meet on Tuesday, we're gonna get something better than what we were anticipating because the floor levels are on the same level. So I just wanted to give the rest of you board members, uh, a feel. And then Ties update, uh, had a phone conference call last week. I think I shared most of that information with you in an email. We're supposed to have another conference this morning, um, at 8:30. And we sat on the phone for 40 minutes and they couldn't get us connected. Um, and so now it's been moved to another, what we think, Deanna then and I got emails that it was maybe canceled. Um, but basically, it comes down to Ties, that we have to pay roughly, uh, $19 or about, per student, or about $84,000 to exit out of, out of Ties. But yet, we still own the building. And is that a good thing or a bad thing that we still own the building? Time will tell. But, uh, in my email, you as board members heard that all the school districts collectively, we still owe roughly $2.8 million, uh, on that building. They're putting it up for sale, they're, they're marketing it. But as they're marketing it, there's costs to run it each month. There's custodial staff, there's maintenance, there's electricity, there's cooling, there's insurance. And so the high estimate, uh, and they believe it's high because they believe that they'll sell it before a full year from now or 18 months from now, is that in the end that we'd have to pay $3 per student operational cost, all of us. For us, that would be about $12,000 to $14,000. I agree with them. I think it will sell before that. I said on the phone, I would hope that we would take less than what it's worth if we're not, I don't wanna keep hanging on to it for another six months and have these operational costs of 50 grand a month. Um, sometimes it's better just to cut your losses, uh, and move on. What you're gonna see down in your packet then are two motion items. Uh, and one of them is that all the school districts did agree, let's move on, let's have Sourcewell, uh, which is, used to be NJPA, take it over after we pay our $19, let's have them do that. And then let's have this other, we're gonna reorganize and still oversee the building. So basically, the executive committee right now, which there's board members on, there are soups on there, they still will have some say, um, on the building. And so those are the two motion items, um, resolution items moving forward.
Thank you. So with that, um, we'll move into the action items, and the first two are related to the Ties item. So the first one I'd like to get a motion in a second on is a motion to approve the joint power agreement, joint powers agreement of sourceable technology, which is formerly known as Ties. A full agreement was attached in the Dropbox. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Again, this says.
The first motion is about.
That Sourcewell is gonna now run what, what, the programs that are left with Ties. They're gonna run them. We've already paid our $19. And after that, if we don't wanna be a member of Sourcewell, we don't have to be a member. That's, that's what that is, that we are agreeing, um, to come forward with them.
Is there any further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. As Tim mentioned, our section, uh, second action item is also related to Ties, and that's a motion to approve a resolution ratifying and approving Ties reorganization and definitive agreements. Uh, there also, the full resolution is attached, available in Dropbox. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Just, part of that is agreeing that, that the executive committee, who's been representing us throughout this, is now gonna represent us on the sale of the building. And again, it's, it's a cross-section of, um, superintendents and board members, so I'm comfortable with that.
This is a roll call vote.
Joe Becker.
Yes.
Peter Busenbach.
Yes.
Scott Gergen.
Yes.
Lisa Dean.
Yes.
Dave Hemble.
Yes.
Ross Roloff.
Yes.
Kelsey Weitz.
Yes.
Motion carries. Our third action item tonight is a motion to approve memberships in Metro XU, MBSA, MSBA, excuse me, and Minnesota State High School League, and, uh, C, Schools for Equity and Education. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Fourth action item is a motion to approve the school district's lead-in water testing program, as was outlined by Tim in the superintendent's report. Can I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Next, we have a motion to approve a change order, a single change order on the high school re-roofing project. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna share that by law, we don't have to bring change orders to the school board. You've already given Kim and I the authority, um, and soon to be Jim, that we can sign off on them. I've just had a practice of always doing it to just kinda, as a way of keeping you, uh, in the loop of what's going on. Um, it gives myself a chance to make sure that, why did that happen? Um, why wasn't this foreseen? And it, everybody knows that when you get into construction or destruction, um, you can get into some things that you never knew were there on the plan. So for an example, the, the two main core ones of this one that make up the 29,000, one is, um, they needed extra insulation, uh, above the roofing. one is, um, they needed extra insulation, uh, above the roofing. So on the, on the hallway, right when you come on, and on the upper, uh, deck there by the performing arts and the athletic area, they needed extra insulation to get up to the, the top of the roof so that it was flat up, up there. Um, and that just wasn't, um, seen on the design, even by what Wold had on their design. Um, the other one was that the state inspector code says that in some situations, if you redo, I'll give this example, this is what it was. So when we had to redo some of the drains inside of our building, code says that it may have to be fire-protected by a, a built-in cover, whether it be steel, whether, well, Wold hadn't interpreted it that way because we've got other piping in those stairwells that isn't covered. Scott said part of it is, your inspector, when they come through, their interpretation of the code and the compliance. And this inspector said that his interpretation is that in these two or three stairwells, we had to enclose them. And so, not, this is an add not necessarily to the, the roofing firm. It's something, an add that we had to do inside because of the piping, because of the roof. So that's how we got to twenty-nine thousand. That was the two, the two big ones. So I am approving it. Or I'm recommending approval.
You recommend.
You're, you're going to be...
You could create an interesting power dynamic here.
Yeah, you're, I am approving it.
I suggest we do that, but, um, so we have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our sixth action item is a motion to approve the following primary vendors for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. And this relates to paper products and supplies, bread products, commodity handling, um, milk, dairy products, and produce. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Just want to let, uh, board members who are new, um, that we're part of the Big Eight, which is a Big Eight purchasing. So we bid this together with them through that purchasing, um, agreement. And Hastings Co-op Creamery, they do bid for the Big Eight, but they've also said that in Hastings, that if there's any bid lower than them, they will match it. Now, this time, they were the lowest bid, but just for board members, and a thank you to the Hastings Co-op Creamery. I, I always wondered why that is legal, but our auditor has said that on farm egg products, you can have somebody who says, I'll match it. Um, so thank you to them once, they've been the number-one bid ever since I've been here. Um, this year, uh, they were the number-one bid, uh, coming in. But again, that's how we bid it, to get a better bid, um, for our school district.
For larger purchasing power.
Yeah, yeah.
Are there any questions or further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our next action item is a motion to approve the two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty contract for the, uh, food service employee group. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion?
Just to share that it's followed, every contract that we've settled this year with the same percentage, whether it was the teachers, the custodians, the pairs, et cetera, it's followed that same, same pattern.
Further discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our eighth action item is a motion to approve the contract with Sternow and Associates for the Students and Family Assistance Program for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions?
I just want to share that Renee Sternow, um, did that at the same price. He's asked for no, no increase, uh, this year.
Ever?
Well, there was one year where he, he finally did say, I needed an increase. But yeah, he tries to keep it pretty consistent, so thank you to him.
Further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our ninth action item, and this is an area in the agenda that had changed from earlier in the day. There was quite a few employees added as a motion to approve the employment of the following. So hopefully, everybody's looking at a sheet with, with the yellow and the black, and those were there. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Tenth action item tonight is a motion to approve the resignation of three employees. Could I get a motion in a second?
Motion.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Our eleventh and final action item for tonight is a motion to approve an increase in FTE effective for the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen school year for a single individual in a physical, physical education at high school to a full FTE. Could I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. Um, you can tell summer is drawing nigh, our other items list is more than two. Good work session and the next regular board meeting. Um, we do have some new teacher luncheon, and welcome back. I think in the past, we've encouraged board members to come, and it's not a hundred percent attendance.
Mm-hmm.
We acknowledge it's the middle of the day on a, on a weekday or very early in the morning of a weekday.
Right.
Some of us have matters, some of us not so much.
Thank you. The other thing, and, uh, for board members who've been around for a while, the, uh, the work session on the eighth of August, I've done that a variety of ways. Sometimes I've invited in principals, sometimes I've invited in maybe just certain leads or whatever. Sometimes we've done it just picnic-style with not a super, super serious agenda. I've just done that different ways, and I haven't decided which, um, direction I'm going to go with that. Um, is everybody able to be at that work session? Or are you going to be on vacation, is somebody on vacation?
I'll be gone.
Okay. That kind of, anybody else going to be gone?
They're there.
Okay. All right.
All right. Um, could I get a motion in a second for a German?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Nobody leave.
We're going to go...
Now we're going to a work session.
Yeah, we're going to go to a work session, which is open to the public, and we'll go next door.